Everybody ready?
Good evening. Fairfield County Council Regular Meeting for Monday, March 11, 2019 is called to order. Do I have approval of the agenda?
Sub moving.
Second.
Next we have the invocation. It's been moved and properly second. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
Approve six zero. I'd like to put on the record that I spoke with Vice Chair Goins. She's still having medical issues with the family, but she is keeping everyone in mind. And I'm asking everyone to keep, please keep her in your prayers. Next we have the invocation, Councilmember Bell.
Let us pray. Father, in the name of Jesus, we come to thank you for all your blessings, God. God, you've been so good to us, and we just want to thank you for all that you do for us. Father, we pray for the citizens of this county. We also pray for this council, God, that you give us wisdom and discernment, that we might know how to conduct the business of this council and this county. Father, may we always remember the least of these, as you talked about in Matthew 25. Again, we thank you, God, and we want to honor you in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Bell.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go in a short executive session to receive legal advice as to the proposed sales lifting agreement for county properties at the former Fairfield Memorial Hospital.
I second.
Motion's been made to go into executive session first and properly second by Mr. Bell. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Approve six zero to go in executive session. Now we go in executive session. All right, I'll take a motion to exit executive session.
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Approve six zero to back into, yeah, back into regular session. At this time, we have the approval of minutes, regular meeting, February 25, 2019. Do I have a motion?
Sub move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Any opposed? Approve six zero. Next is public, no public presentations. Next, public comment session. Ms. Davis.
We have one speaker tonight, Mr. Randy Bright, speaking on hospitality ordinance.
You really should only speak during the public, public hearing.
Start is time.
No problem.
Nah, nah, that's nice try. Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One, Fairfield County. The diagnosis is in. Fairfield County's been caught up in an epidemic. We exhibit all the symptoms of this epidemic that's sweeping the nation. Our property values are plummeting. Our property taxes thusly are plummeting. County services are strained. Our attractiveness for new business, new residents, has declined. Our investment attractiveness has declined. Lenders are leery about lending to new business, new homes, and then charging more interest rates. Opportunities are limited. There's a reduced feeling of safety and pride within the community because of this affliction. All those reduced areas have also resulted in some increased areas of social and environmental This isn't me talking. This is HUD, Federal Reserve, referencing blight throughout the community, and we are afflicted with blight. And all the blight and all these problems that I previously mentioned, they only create more of the same problems, so it's a deadly cycle. So we've got to take action. It's been a long overlooked problem in our community, the dilapidated buildings, the empty buildings, the wanton code violations. So it's up to us to invest in our future, and that's why I'm in favor of this ordinance, to ensure that our tax money, however, is well spent. We need to, we need to have a plan, how we were going to address it. What specific goals do we have? How many, we, we know one goal, we're going to collect about $250,000 a year. Where is that money going to go to? Is it going, is there, have we prioritized businesses that, and, and buildings that need to be removed? Have we prioritized adding on additional inspectors so we can enforce the codes? Are we going to clean up some areas besides just bulldoze areas? What are we going to do with it? So we know we've got a problem, which is blight. I think we're attacking it by the right way, by investing it with a tax that outsiders will help us pay, but let's be sure we have a plan so we can execute it properly, and it just doesn't go awry. Just think of all the programs in Richland County, penny sales tax for one, that didn't really have a plan, and look what happened. Think of SCANA and VC Summer Nuclear Plant. They never did discover a plan there, and we're still paying for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes segment one.
Now down to public hearings. First, we'll have an ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to establish a tourism development fee pursuant to Section 6-1-500 subsequent to the South Carolina Code of Laws. We'll open this hearing at 6:17. Ms. Davis, do we have any who want to speak?
We have three who wish to speak. First, Mr. Brad Hoffman.
Brad Hoffman, Blair, South Carolina. This tourism development fee, we need a little bit more specification of what that's going to be and who's going to have to pay that fee. I have a farm, and we're doing a bunch of agritourism, and we're trying to get more so in that, because, as you know, most farmers don't make a dime, and we're trying to get a little bit more money revenue-wise to help our farm out, to grow a little bit more. And so if we could get some clarification on that, that would be awesome. And the other thing is, is where can we find this information that's easy if you're not computer literate and don't have, you know, 50 minutes to spend and research the stuff? If you can answer these questions, that'd be great. Thank you for your time tonight.
Next, Carol Turner.
Carol Turner, District Three, from the Mitford Community. I would like to echo what Mr. Hoffman said. We need details on this. I too am a farmer, trying to make ends meet with diversification. We'd like to know just a little bit more about it, and how much money is expected to be generated in this revenue, exactly what it's going to be used for. These, these are issues that are a little bit cloudy, the, the general tourism fee. I know the idea is to get folks who are coming into our county from outside of our county, but how will this affect those of us who already live in our county and are trying to, to diversify and add some extra or different types of, of ideas? Thank you.
Next, Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. I agree with the previous two speakers. We need specifics, but I also understand this is a first ordinance, but we need specifics very soon. How much? Who pays? What's it going to go to? And I would, I would add a suggestion to keep the focus very narrow as far as what we're trying to promote, so that we just don't have a shotgun approach and don't really make a dent in a thing. And, and, and the two previous speakers brought up one of our strengths, or possible strengths in tourism, is agritourism, and certainly that should be on the agenda. But I think another strength of ours that we could leverage with our tourism is sports and recreation. And in that sports and recreation, I include our hunting and fishing. Bountiful, bountiful. And we could coordinate with hunting lodges, landowners, et cetera, on, on those issues, and even, even the state parks. But also, in, in the sports lane, there's, of course, Carolina Adventure World. They bring a ton of tourists. I don't know if anybody realized, they have some really big national events that bring a lot of people here. We could help leverage that. And then we could have other events, sports events, in this county. I see a lot of bikers, particularly on the Ridgeway side of I-77 that use, uses, but we could have a lot of walking, running, and others, events. We hold some, but I think we could promote that more, and that's something that's really on trend with the rest of the nation now, and people are really enthusiastic, healthy events, and it introduces people, these kind of events introduce the people to what we have. So keep, I like the agriculture part, and I like the sports focus, and also including perhaps kids tournaments. But let's keep the focus narrow, and let's get us some specifics. Who pays? How much? When? Where? And how? And what the focus actually is going to be? Thank you.
No one else sign to speak?
Thank you. We'll close this meeting, public meeting, at 6:21. I'm now down to Item B in ordinance, County Council of Fairfield, South Carolina, to establish a local hospitality tax pursuant to Section 6-1-700, subsequent of the South Carolina Code of Laws, to apply to all establishments which sell prepared meals and beverages located in unincorporated areas of the county. Ms. Davis, we have anyone who wants to sign up to speak?
We do. The first speaker, we have three speakers. First, Mr. Brad Hoffman.
I'm sorry. Let us back it up. We're going to open this public meeting up at 6:22. Thank you.
Brad Hoffman, again, Blair, South Carolina. So once again, this ordinance is pretty vague, in my understanding. In our farm, we do sell old-time Coke bottles, Cheerwine, and bottled water. Am I going to be subject to pay taxes on that stuff? And sometimes when we have the Girl Scouts come out or the Boy Scouts, we offer them a broth that we cook at our farm, partial in their fee of learning about our farm animals. So this is just another thing with agritourism, is, is we just need it clarified so we know what we've got to charge in the future, or will we have to tell people what we have to charge and why our rates have gone up, if they have to go up. We're just trying to figure this out, and if we could get clarification on, to the T, of exactly what you want from every individual in unincorporated Fairfield County, of what this tax includes, and just have it black and white, that we could pick up the letters from wherever, and, and read it, and understand it, and not have so much legal documentation in it with the big fancy words, because some of us just don't know big fancy words, I'm sorry to say. But that, that's my issue on this. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carol Turner.
We really didn't plan this, this way, but I'm Carol Turner, District Two, in the Mitford I know, again, the idea is to get folks who are traveling through our county to help fund some of the expenses of our county, but this, this is focused on the unincorporated areas. Now, I live at Exit 48, and there are a lot of locals who eat there. I know the pickups that are there for breakfast and for lunch. You see the same folks there. Down at the lake, the two restaurants down there, the Retreat and the Windmill, they probably don't get a whole lot of pass-through traffic there. That's locals eating there. Over at Blackstock Fish Camp, I doubt they get too many, you know, tourists passing through there. So it seems like until Fairfield County really develops a robust tourism industry, we should proceed cautiously with this, because we're taxing our locals who eat at our local establishments in the unincorporated areas. And I'm sure there are other, you know, restaurants and things that I don't know about. But this one, a number was given to me that 70% of the activity at these establishments was passing through, and it would be great, but after talking to the folks who are working in these establishments, they know who's coming in and what they're going to eat. So that's not pass-through traffic. That's local. And we have a lot of truckers who stop at Exit 48. They're not tourists. We're on their route, and we want them to stop and eat in our county, not pass on through to Chester or stop in Richland. So again, this, this one just might need a little more consideration for what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Randy Bright. No one else sign to speak?
We'll close that public hearing at 6:26. Now on to Item C, an ordinance of County, of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to establish a county business registration program to apply to regulated businesses located in the unincorporated areas of the county. We'll open this public hearing at 6:26. Ms. Davis, do we have anyone who wants to sign to speak?
We have three speakers. Mr. Brad Hoffman.
Once again, Brad Hoffman, Blair, South Carolina. I think this, this is a good thing that you're doing, to get all these unincorporated businesses registered. I would not mind paying $15. Is this going to be a one-time, or is this going to be a yearly, ongoing thing? And if it is a yearly, ongoing thing, then as being a registered business in Fairfield County, I would hope that you guys would take that registration and put it on all your social media, or get lists out to people looking for these small businesses in their communities that they don't know about, and take a little bit of time with that. And, and I think that would be a great thing, that we could probably bring a lot more revenue into Fairfield County with people knowing these businesses. And if we had a big booklet when they show up in Fairfield County to the first business, well, here's all the local businesses that are registered in unincorporated area. Check them out. Farms, hair salons, you know, whatever, little mom-and-pop stores that, you know, or any other business of that matter. So I'm not against this whatsoever. I think we all need to be registered. I tried to get a business license when I started my farm seven years ago, and I was told that I was in an unincorporated area. I did not need a business license with what I was doing. And I appreciate your time, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Carol Turner.
Again, Carol Turner, District Three, Mitford. I wouldn't be opposed to this registration fee, except I'm a little fuzzy on, on, it was reported in the Voice newspaper that this was to combat blight, and that's just what was reported there. We have code enforcements, we have regulations, ordinances, and everything else. So if we're going to receive this revenue to combat blight, I'm not exactly sure how the two go together. But anyway, if, if we get all this money in, how's it going to be administered? Who's going to administer it? Who's going to collect it? The expense of that compared to the revenue that's expected to come in, how, how are those two things going to be worked out? Just, just a few questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, District One, Ridgeway, Fairfield County. Again, I largely agree with the two previous speakers, but this is a case where the old axiom, you don't know what you don't know, applies. In other words, we don't know what businesses we have out there unless we get them all registered. We can't control them. We can't promote them. We, we can't ensure that they're protected. We can't ensure that, that they are taxed properly. So this registration fee, I think, is important. $15, I, I mentioned this in the last meeting about this. There is one huge caveat I have. You guys got to commit that it's going to stay at $15 unless there's some nuclear explosion or something. It, it can't go up. This can't be a first step or incremental tax scheme. So commit to that, and I would, I would say, commit to it in, in the ordinance itself. Let's, let's just hear you. Can you, can you commit to not raising this thing unless, you know, dire circumstances occur? The other, the other part of it is, is that I thought, you know, the, the great idea is that this would help you know what to promote, and you, you could put it on website. It should be on, perhaps, on the economic development website, or the, the tourism website, or both, so that people can reference and, and put them down by categories, I believe Brad, categories of business, I believe Brad made that suggestion also. But the, the other part of it is, I, I think them, from my understanding, this is, the $15 is not supposed to be, address blight. I thought that was a hospitality tax. It's, I, I think the $15 is just so that you can administer this. That's my understanding, and I, that's a reasonable fee, and I understand it's going to be an annual fee, because you keep getting new businesses, they come and they go. So you, you have to keep track of it. $15 is, is worth it, so that you know what you know. Thank you.
Thank you. No one else sign to speak?
All right. We'll close this public hearing at 6:31. Now down to ordinances, resolutions, and orders. Mr. Chairman, just, just a question on this. Mr. Douglas, we're going to have to continue to our ordinances. Okay. Question. We have a chance to do discussion right, right after we vote on it. We have the second reading, ordinance number 710, an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a lease between Fairfield County and Fairfield Medical Associates PA and other related matters. Do I have a motion?
We'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Uh-huh.
Do we have any discussion? No discussion. It's been approved six zero. Now down to second reading of ordinance number 717, an ordinance of Fairfield County Council of Fair, well, I'm sorry, an ordinance of County Council of Fairfield, South Carolina, to establish a tourism and development fee pursuant to Section 6-1-500, subsequent of the South Carolina Code of Laws. Do we have a motion?
We'll move.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second, but before we have discussion, I'm going to refer to our attorney. Would you mind coming to the podium, sir?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman.
Like the speaker said earlier, break it down to human terms to someone like myself.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of council. First, I want to apologize for the, my voice got a little bit of the crud that's going through the air. I think it's sinuses, so I don't think I'm contagious, at least for that. We are here tonight based upon ordinance number 717, which we have denominated as a local tourism fee. It is based upon the South Carolina Code of Laws, 6-1-500, et cetera, and it, that provides for a local accommodations tax. Now, there's certain areas of the state call it a fee, certain areas of the state call it a tax. Charleston County, for example, Lexington County, and, oh, sorry, short. Charleston County, for example, Lexington County, as well as Greenville County, they all call their accommodations tax a tourism fee. Doesn't mean that there's anything wrong with that. That's just a different way to provide a name for it, because that's what it is trying to do. It's trying to develop the tourism by use of that fee. 6-1-500 is the, the law that is referenced by virtue of this ordinance. First and foremost, the, the tax or the fee that's going to be collected here in Fairfield County, what happens is, is the state law provides that there's already a state accommodations tax out there. It's 2%. It's already incorporated as part of our sales tax here in Fairfield County, which is 5% plus 2% to give you the 7%. There's a local option sales tax that's previously been enacted, so that's why there's an 8% tax in Fairfield. But Fairfield County, based upon the most recent collections, only collected approximately $37,000, $38,000 in that state accommodation tax earlier. So what that means is that going forward pursuant to 6-4-10, as well as 6-4-25, that there does not have to be an advisory committee about the revenues that are generated from that fee or that accommodations tax. So all of those fees are actually going to be allocated pursuant to the terms of both the ordinance and the state law, which incorporates them. Turning to the actual ordinance itself, County Council is not required to have a referendum in order to enact this. It's pursuant to a positive majority of County Council on that vote. There is another fee that is known as a local tourism fee that does require a county referendum, but the way that ordinance is, is drafted, the way that law is drafted, actually, it only fits Myrtle Beach in Ory County, because it requires $14 million in sales tax, other conditions that, that don't apply anywhere else in the state. That was a special tax fee that the legislature put in solely for the Myrtle Beach area. So that's not an issue that's before the council today. They can approve this by three readings of the ordinance and public hearing. What happens is, is the county can impose a fee of up to 3% if they so choose, as their tourism fee or their accommodations tax. Again, they're kind of interchangeable words. What happens is, is in, in, in an incorporated area such as the town of Windsboro, the town of Ridgeway, the county can only charge up to 1.5%. The final 1.5% to, to equal three would have to be approved by a resolution of the town of Windsboro or the town of Ridgeway. So I just wanted to, to make everybody to be aware of that. Turning to, if you'll bear with me, the expenditure of the funds, I know that's a, that's a big question. Everybody says, well, what are the funds from this fee are going to be used? First off, they're going to be kept in a separate fund, totally separate and distinct. They have to be kept away from basically the general fund. And the, what happens is, is it depends on how much money that comes in, based upon that tax, is how counties get to, to expend those funds. Subsection 61530 basically provides, if you get over $900,000 in those taxes or fees, you can expend those funds, and I'm going to, I'm going to read this to you, for any one of the following six purposes, and here we go. First is tourism-related buildings, including but not limited to civic centers, coliseums, and aquariums. Number two is tourism-related cultural, recreational, or historic facilities. Number three is beach access, re-nourishment, or other tourism-related lands and water access. Number four is highways, roads, streets, and bridges providing access to tourist destinations. Number five is advertisements and promotions related to tourism development. And finally, number six is water and sewer infrastructure to serve tourism-related demand. Now again, those are the six categories of what these funds can be spent. If, and I don't think this is going to be the case, if the county were to generate over $900,000, and I don't see any figures that would support that, then the county could spend not only those, on those six categories, but also for police, fire protection, emergency medical services, and emergency preparedness operations directly attended or directly related to those six categories. Since it's not likely going to hit that $900,000 threshold, then up to 50% of the funds that are collected could be used for, again, the fire, the police, that are related to the tourism services. An example that is in the law in South Carolina, basically, you could use it for a fire truck, but that fire truck would have to be assigned to a station that had a tourist destination in it. So you just couldn't put it out in the hinterland somewhere if there's not a viable tourism-related site there for, for folks to go visit. That's pretty much it in a nutshell. I know there's been some questions about going forward and how we're going to collect it. There are mechanisms that are in the ordinance. The ordinance itself, the way it's drafted right now, has an effective date that is blank. It doesn't have when this goes into effect, as in when the program starts. Obviously, the ordinance is effective upon third reading, but when the program would begin is up to council. I've spoken with Mr. Taylor, and given some of the things that need to take place, I would humbly suggest that, starting with the fiscal year, July 1st, would probably be a logical starting point, because what happens is, in order for the county, again, to reach out to the businesses that need to provide or pay that tax, they're going to have to prepare particular forms, get that word out, and let them know what steps need to be undertaken as a part of this ordinance. If you go online, I mean, I know there was a gentleman that came up here earlier was saying that they didn't want to talk about lots of big words. This is the revenue ruling from the South Carolina Department of Revenue. It's 1998-22, and it lists, you know, what constitutes, you know, how many nights you have to stay, what constitutes a room, what constitute a payment, do you have to give a business license? But... But that's a lot of reading. There are forms and there are actually flow charts. If you go to the South Carolina Department of Revenue website, it's called SE Doorway, they've got very graphic, I mean, it's literally a flow chart that says if you do this, this is what happens. If you do this, this is what happens. I have templates from other counties across the state that once, or if this ordinance gets passed, that we would prepare on behalf of the county so that way the county office can post this online, can get it to the taxpayers and hopefully answer any and all questions at that time that they have about that. Because ultimately, this is a self-reporting tax. And I'm going to turn finally here, if you'll bear with me. Section 6-1-570, which again, this is all incorporated in the ordinance, provides for how the payments are made. If you only make a certain amount of money, you have to pay it monthly. If it's, you know, less than that, it's quarterly, and if it's less than that, it's annually. But it is a self-reportable, it's nothing that, you know, unless you file that paperwork that the county can, can know about that. But again, one of the reasons going forward at this time with the business registration fee program, that was to help assist the county in this collection effort for both the tourism fee as well as the hospitality tax. That's an overview for you. Does anybody have any questions I may be able to answer at this time?
Any council member having questions?
To answer Mr. Hoffman's question about who had to be licensed or permitted, the farmers, do they have to be licensed?
There, again, there are specific provisions that are in the code that state, you know, for example, Mr. Hoffman's questions about the accommodations, about agribusiness and renting it out, there are provisions that state that if it's a house that has less than a certain number of bedrooms, it does not apply. If it's for certain dates and certain times, whether it's less than seven days, more than seven days, there's, there's a kind of like a checklist and you kind of go down the chart, yes, no, yes, no. And that would provide whether or not that the tax needs to be collected. And then again, Department of Revenue has the forms, the county, when we go forward, if it passes, would prepare all of this information, have all that available. There will be a, you know, I've kind of got a four-page checklist from other places that provide that information, a FAQ, if you will, FAQ about what to do, what not to do, questions, so on and so forth.
Any other council member having questions? On this question, Mr. Taylor, I guess the collection of funds, could you elaborate on that a little bit?
The collection of funds?
Yes, sir.
Essentially, the businesses collect the funds for us and then they remit those to the county. And they do, if I'm not mistaken, the law did allow them to keep a certain portion of that for an administration fee even. So they do get compensated for the money that they collect and then remit to the county.
You put it in a separate fund, though, right?
We put it in a separate fund because again, these dollars can only be used for the things that our attorney, Mr. Morgan, just mentioned. They can only be used for very specific things. They cannot go in just the general fund, all of these dollars.
Thank you. I'm guessing you just want to hang around until the next, next, want to hang tight?
I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I'll take a vote this time. All those in favor?
Yeah.
I'm asking all those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? It's approved 6-0. Now down to second reading of ordinance number 718, an ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to establish a local hospitality tax pursuant to section 6-1-700 subsequent of the South Carolina Code of Laws to apply to all establishments which sell prepared meals and beverages located in the unincorporated areas of the county. Do I have a motion?
It's been moved and properly second.
At this time, I'll defer to our lawyer, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, sir.
To give a brief discussion also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. What we're going forward now in ordinance 718 is the imposition of a local hospitality tax. That is a tax that would be charged here in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County of 2% based upon the gross proceeds derived from the sale of all prepared food and beverages. Okay? It also, the tax is imposed on all prepared foods and beverages sold in establishments licensed for the consumption of alcoholic beverages, beer or wine within Fairfield County. Now, I know there's a big question about what constitutes the prepared foods. We have a list here and it's a little extensive. I'm not going to read all of it, but again, this would be something that would be provided both on the website and through Fairfield County, other means to kind of indicate what does and does not comply. You can read the statute, which is 6-1-700 et cetera, that gives you that, but we've tried to make it as friendly as possible, user-friendly as possible with regards to what's on there. For example, what, what foods are taxed, just to address some earlier comments, salads made on-site, sandwiches and subs prepared on-site, bakery items cooked or baked on-site, popcorn made on-site, other fountain drinks, so on and so forth. Then you've got to say, well, what is exempt from the tax? And again, you turn to cold, canned or bottled drinks in a vending machine on-site. That is exempt. Prepackaged, ready-to-consume meats, you know, if you go to the 7-Eleven or the gas station, you pull something out that's already prepared, that was prepared off-site. It's already been ready-made. That is exempt from the tax. Hospitality tax is very similar to the tourism development fee or the accommodations tax. Those funds must be kept in a separate fund. They are collected for the same exact reasons that are previously read, those six reasons. And again, the same thing happens if it's less than $900,000, which I anticipate based upon the figures we've seen here, then half of those, those funds that are collected could be used for the services related to tourism. The other half to be, have to be related directly to tourism themselves, one of those six categories. There is a question then, if you get into whether or not there, it can't exceed a 2% of overall the hospitality tax rate. So if there's a municipality that already has one in place, then the county has to back down so that way it max or caps out at 2%. And then the way that the ordinance is written, again, has an effective date that's blank. I would again, with consultation with Mr. Taylor, humbly suggest that with a budget cycle, a fiscal year starting on July 1st would be a good way to do that. If you look at the terms of the ordinance, provides that the county finance office, the director of finance, is responsible for the collecting and the remittance and taking care of those taxes and provides for also penalties if those taxes are not paid or not made in time. It's typically on the 20th of every month and it provides for a 5% fee if those taxes are late.
A and each tax kind of, they kind of go hand in hand.
They very much go hand in hand. And again, the timing of this, along with the business registration fee, was to allow for enforcement mechanisms for the county to, again, and there's been some great ideas about taking that list and presenting that and promoting that, and that's probably a policy decision that y'all would have to make, but at the same time, the purpose was to allow for easier enforcement and collection.
Mr. Douglas?
I think it should be stressed, too, that we're one of the very few counties that do not charge a hospitality tax and we're just catching up with other counties around them.
Correct. Mr., I can't say specifically, but I would definitely say it's the overwhelming majority. If it's not over 40 of the 46, then I would be surprised. It's a very high percentage.
One quick question, Mr. Morgan. The question was brought to me about food truck vendors by one of the local establishments here. Are we going to have to incorporate something in the ordinance or to address that, possibly a fee? Or how would we go about that?
Based upon, they would be, depending upon where they are located, if they're, you know, if they're holding their food truck fare or rodeo, I think that's sometimes a term that is used, if they're conducting that business inside in an area that's an unincorporated part of the county, then yes, they would be subject to that.
I guess that would come down to code enforcement in order to enforce that. Okay.
Can you charge them a standard fee for coming into the county?
We don't have anything in our provisions right now. We have to be careful about charging different folks and imposing different fees based upon the same level of service. There are mechanisms by which you could do that, but if they're going to be coming into the county and doing any type of business, even if they're based outside of the county, assuming that business registration fee is passed, if they provide a service anywhere outside of a, basically in an unincorporated area, they would be responsible for paying that fee. And again, that list would then help in any type of enforcement action, should it be necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Any other council member having questions, discussion? At this time, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? It's approved 6-0. Now, we have the second reading, ordinance number 719, an ordinance of the County Council of Fairfield County, South Carolina, to establish a county business registration program to apply to regulated businesses located in the unincorporated areas of Fairfield County. Do we have a motion? It's been moved and properly second. At this time, I'll defer back to our legal representative, Mr. Morgan.
Thank you for allowing me to continue to conduct the meeting so far. If you'll bear with me just a moment, try to get my technology to work.
Just remember to break it down to, as you say in Marine Corps, Barney terms.
Well, I'm former Army, so we're not too terribly much different. Mr. Chairman, members of council, we're here based upon a statutory provision. It's 12-37-135 of the South Carolina Code of Laws that provides for a business registration fee. It is a simple fee of only $15 that is capped by state law. Council cannot turn around and change this and make it 20 next year, 25 the year after. It is capped unless the South Carolina Legislature changes its mind. I do not want to speak as to the wisdom of our South Carolina State Legislature. What this business registration fee program does, again, it applies to anybody who conducts business inside of, inside of the county that's not in an unincorporated area. There is mechanisms in here that, that basically defines business, but quite frankly, again, in English, it's what you think it is. If you are conducting a business, that's what, you know, if you're charging any type of fee for any type of service, that is conducting business, you will have to register with that. It provides that, again, the, and we will prepare this, should this ordinance pass, a series of forms to be filled out that will have some sample ones that I've looked at other counties, Greenville County being one, that basically, it's very simple, it's one page. With technology, we may be even be able to have it set up where you can fill it out all online and submit it online. It's not very difficult to fill out, there's not a lot of information, contains some very basic information, but mostly to allow for that enforcement and to give the other provisions of our ordinances, be it code enforcement, et cetera, to then be able to, you know, kind of get their ability to reach out and contact these people. Because as it stands right now, I don't think that there is a list and I think that is a problem. I know Fire, for example, I think EMS, I've also inquired and said that this could be useful information. This again, again, bear with me, provides for mechanisms that if you don't annually pay, it is an annual $15 fee, that, you know, the county could not issue you that business registration fee and therefore if they find you operating in the county, then you could be penalized and there are penalty provisions, so on and so forth. This is not based upon the size of the business or the revenue of a business. It doesn't matter if you've got one employee, if you're operating as a business, or 1,000 employees, it's just a $15 registration fee. It's very basic. It's also used in other parts of the state. I know Williamsburg County, for example, is another smaller rural county like us, they have that, that program in place as well.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Any council member?
I think it, you know, the $15 fee is fine, but like Mr. Hoffman said, we need to find some kind of way to advertise the fact that they did pay the fee and let everybody know that they're in business. I would hope that, this is one of the things we can put on the new website to.
Yeah, I do, that's a wonderful idea. Because again, they're getting something in return for their money. We're helping advertise their business, which again, helps the county.
Okay. You know, the council member having questions? Thank you, Ms. Morgan.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I may, I forgot to address this and I apologize. This also has the same provisions where there is no effective date for the initiation of the program. And again, I think it falls in line, whatever the effective date or the start of the program for both the tourism fee and the hospitality tax, this should probably roll in at the same time. And there will be, you know, all the fact, the information, the forms that will be available that we'll be in the process of making.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. At this time, I'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? It's approved 6-0. We have no board and commission minutes. Now down to board and commission appointments. First, we have the disabilities and special needs appointment of Ms. Diane Willis, District 1.
Has so moved.
It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? Approved 6-0. Is Ms. Willis in the house tonight with us?
No.
Okay. Now down to item B, planning commission appointment of Mr. James Harris Jr., District 6. All those in favor?
Uh.
I'm sorry, I'm back up, I'm getting ahead of myself. Motion to, motion to approve?
Has so moved.
Been moved and properly second. All those in favor? Any opposed? Approved 6-0. No old business, new business is discussion and approval of sales listing agreement for county properties at the former Fairfield Memorial Site. All those in favor? A motion, I guess I'm trying to get out of here quick, ain't I? It's been moved and properly second. All those in favor?
Uh.
Any opposed? It's been moved and properly second. At this time, I'll defer to our attorney, Mr. Morgan, again, just to give us a brief, brief history, brief knowledge on it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. This is just the listing agreement for the parcels of property that the county purchased from the former Fairfield Memorial Hospital Site. It includes the medical office outbuildings 1 and 2, the rehab facility, as well as the small sliver of land that contains the two portable buildings. This is a sale agreement that kind of goes hand in hand with the hospital, who are currently using the same individuals to list the property. So this is a, an idea to, to partner together and use a little bit of synergy and use a little bit of the momentum to go forward, to allow for the county to, instead of just holding on to property, but potentially development for the betterment of the citizens of Fairfield County.
I think I just wanted you to run the meeting, didn't I?
I'm, no, sir. I was not voted into office. I'm referring.
All those in favor? Any opposed? It's approved 6-0. Now down to county administrators.
Travis not here.
5-0, yeah. Now down to county administrator's report, Mr. Jason. Go ahead, Mr. Taylor.
Do Jason's, yes.
Go ahead, yeah.
We have Mr. Jason Pope, who is the director of our Fairfield County Fire Services here to speak to council tonight, update them on things in his department, answer any questions council may have. Mr. Pope?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council, for this opportunity to give an update on your county fire service. I think Mr. Anderson's got something going to put up on the screen.
Area in Greenville County relies on volunteer firefighters to keep the community safe. They currently have 120 active members, but they need more.
News 19's Daniel Bonds brings us that story.
When people call us, it's the worst day of their life. And so our job at the end of the day is just to do whatever we can to make it better.
Jason Pope is the director of fire services for Fairfield County. The county has four career firefighters and depends on volunteers, but those numbers have been dropping.
It's not a crisis yet, but I do think if the trends that we've been watching over the last 15 to 20 years, if they continue, then we will be at crisis level.
At the community volunteer fire department in Winsboro, there once was a waiting list just to serve.
Seventies, 50 members. Now to 2019, we have 16.
Pope says one of the reasons for the decline is many residents work outside of the county and just don't have the time. Increased required training is also a challenge.
Forty years ago, a basic fire class, you could complete it in 40 hours. Now it's 140 hours of fire training to get you in the door and get you working.
Last year, they responded to just over 1,000 fire calls, but in a county that is about 700 square miles, they need more people willing to sign up.
I need twice as many volunteers as we have. You know, that's not a, that's just a, I'm trying to get the word out, we need a whole lot more.
The volunteers do get a very small stipend for each meeting or call they respond to, but the emphasis is giving back.
Because this is about helping your fellow man. This is about helping your neighbor. This is about helping your community and giving back. And so we. In Winsboro, Daniel Bonds, News nineteen, WLTX.
Uh, thank you, uh, for showing that. We've, uh, I wanted to show that because we've been trying to get the word out, uh, as to our needs here, and, uh, thank you, Daniel Bonds, you know, he's a hometown guy, and he reached out to us, and, uh, I think The Voice had run some things for us too in the paper, and I know the Country Chronicle has been a big help. We've been using everything that we can to get the word out, and I just wanted to show that, uh, highlight, uh, what we've been trying to do. Uh, last year, we, we did add, uh, fifteen, uh, volunteer firefighters. We have a hundred and seventy volunteer firefighters on the role, on the roster, and I, as you heard me tell, Daniel, uh, we have about a hundred and twenty active who are really participating on a regular basis. We are extremely vulnerable still during the daytime, uh, Monday to Friday, daytime hours, that's when we're hurting, you know, fifty percent of our volunteers, uh, who are still working, works out, outside of the county, so we're left here with a, with a void. Uh, and as I mentioned to Daniel, we're committed, we want people who are committed to the mission. Um, we, 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 yes, we do give, uh, the volunteers a small stipend, uh, but, uh, you know, and last year, we paid, uh, over ninety-five thousand dollars in stipend money, and it was actually, it was money well spent, that is money well spent, it in no way covers what it would, uh, that actually cost them, it is a s- very small amount to pay our people, and they're worth every penny of it. Uh, but as you know, uh, money is never a long-term answer, it never provides long-term motivation, that's why we're trying to sell people on the mission. I don't focus on the benefits and the stipends, I don't focus on that, I focus on trying to sell the mission, it's about helping our county. Uh, we have, uh, we hired, uh, two more, uh, full-time firefighters this year, uh, they're, uh, they're actually here with us, uh, on the back of the room, if y'all would stand up, please, sir. We have, uh, Mr. Chris Gant here, uh, and then, uh, Mr. Spencer Bradley, and they have been, uh, worked for us since January. Uh, Chris was a, a volunteer for here, uh, for Fairfield County, for the Community Fire Station for a very long time. Uh, how many years, Chris? Eighteen years, he volunteered with the Community Fire Department, he won Volunteer of the Year almost every year, so now I think they're probably kind of glad that he's not there so somebody else can win that award now, uh, but that's okay, thank you very much, uh, you guys can sit down, thank you. And we also, we're, we're gonna hire a new, uh, fire inspector this year too, and he's actually in the room, Mr. Ray Hochschild's here, uh, some of you know Ray, uh, Ray has been, uh, in the fire service a very long time, and, uh, he is now retired from the state, and he lives here in our community, and he's gonna be working for us on a part-time basis, it's not a full-time position, so it's a part-time basis, he's gonna be helping, uh, Greg Gerber, who's our deputy chief and fire marshal, and he's gonna be able to really add, yeah, and really help us in the fire inspection world, so we're glad to have, uh, all these guys on board with us, so thank y'all for being here. When it comes to staffing, we, uh, this year, with the help of the county office, with, uh, with Chris Clausen and Ms. Beverly, uh, Mosey, we are going to apply for a SAFER grant this year. If y'all remember, we applied for one last year, it's a federal grant, there is a small call share, but it's for hiring of full-time firefighters. Uh, the deadline to apply for that, I think is March the twenty-second, I think is what it is, and so we're getting some good support, we're gonna ask for, uh, probably six to eight full-time firefighters. Last year, we asked for ten, we didn't get it, so we're gonna play with the numbers to see if it makes us a little bit more attractive, uh, this year, so we're moving forward with that. We are continuing, uh, because we're adding paid staff, we're continuing to, uh, pursue our fire station, uh, renovation plan, which we've started on as a concept, where, uh, as we're, as we're adding these paid, uh, staff, I've gotta bring our facilities up to par, you know, I gotta have some living quarters and some of them, I gotta have showers and that kind of thing, and so we're moving forward, uh, with that plan, we're working with an engineering firm here that the county has, um, graciously let us work with to, to develop a budget request this year, so we'll be, you'll be seeing something, uh, from us this year at budget time, of what do we think it's gonna cost in our first phase to really kind of get us started. So that's, that's moving forward. We're also exploring the possibility of converting, uh, a current building that's assigned to our recreation, it's in the Midford area, and we're exploring the possibility of converting it to a fire and EMS station, and the reason is, uh, based on, uh, the recreation is not my department, but I've been told that it's not being used effectively, so we're looking at options, and so I'm working with Admin, uh, and that, and Mr. Anderson and Mr. Taylor, uh, to explore that. Uh, Talison, the engineering firm, is looking at that building for us right now, yes, sir, and please stop me, if you have a question, just raise your hand.
Isn't there a fire station right down the road from the recreation center?
Well, we, we have the Midford Fire Station, I don't know the mileage, uh, to be honest with you.
About a half mile or a mile.
It's, it's, uh, it's, it's close by. Uh, the reason, uh, that we're really looking into this, again, first of all, we were told it's not being used, uh, effectively now, so the idea, uh, a part of our renovation plans include updating the current Midford Fire Station, which would be a significant investment. When you look at a, a building that's already there, if it's, and that we've already, that's, it's existing, and if, if, if there, if it's not being used effectively, then hey, can we use this one too? So, um, that's, that's where we're at, and that, we're, nothing's done, we're in the early stages of this, you know, there's no...
Well, what all would have to be done to the recreation center in order to make it, uh, to make it an EMS, uh, substation, because the other place looks like to me it'd be better to, um, redo it or help them out.
Well, we're gonna, we wanna do both at the end of the day, uh, so, uh, you know, EMS is in a trailer, up at the, um, the recycling center, so a need, we don't have room for EMS at the current fire station, uh, that's, there's no room for them there, I mean, unless we, significant renovations in the building.
Well, have you researched to find out how much it would take to make the recreation center usable, cause you're gonna have to have two bays there, you could just add one bay back to the other place for EMS.
Well, the, the, the current recreation facility would, we would use the gym, would be the new bays, so wouldn't be, we'd be adding no fo- uh, footprint to the building, but using currently what's there. Again, we're in the early phases of this, okay, I'm, I still don't have a really a good handle, uh, from the engineering firms as to what exactly it's gonna take, right now, it's an idea on the table that we're exploring, I mean, just...
It needs to be used.
But, that's right, and I think that's the, the, the goal at the end of the day, is to use it effectively.
I know that's an idea, but before we do that, I, I've received phone calls and requests to keeping it, so forth and so on, so let's, let's look at all avenues of maybe possibly changing the hours and see if that'll accommodate citizens a little, little further before we, uh, uh, go with the, uh, fire services, so.
Well, I work for you guys at the end of the day, so, so I'll do whatever my bosses say, uh, again, it is an idea, there, that's all it is right now at this point, very early stages. Thank you for your input. Uh, so far in twenty nineteen, we've responded to a hundred and seventy-two calls for service. Uh, twenty percent or thirty-nine of those, uh, calls or fire calls, uh, fifty-two percent majority are EMS-related calls, a lot of our full-time staff are helping our EMS units and, and responding, helping them on calls, and the rest of them kind of drop off, uh, false alarms and service calls. So a hundred and seventy-two calls so far this calendar year.
Are, the, the full-time workers that we have, you say, they're dedicated to one fire station, or do they move around?
They move around, we have, uh, three fire stations that we have staff, they rotate them every month, now they're, uh, they're at the same three because of my facilities, I, I've got them at places where I can put them, my other fire stations, I can't put anybody at, cause they're not, you know, uh, they're not, uh, equipped properly, so we do rotate those, those firefighters, uh, once a month, they go to a different station, but it's the same three, if that makes sense.
What, what stations are there?
Uh, the southeastern station, uh, Station Five, out at, uh, Park Road, uh, the reason we're there is, uh, now that, the southeastern fire station, one of the oldest, it needs to be replaced, but, so we have an EMS unit right there, so, uh, the full-time guy has a place to be, has a dayroom, has bathroom, showers or whatever, and can, and it's right next door and he can respond to equipment.
Well, a new substation we're gonna have over, and hopefully, um, they could assist until we get volunteers to work there.
Yes, sir, that is definitely in the plan. Um, the other, did you ask, the other, the other station, Station Twenty, which is Bates Crossroads Station, is also an EMS substation, so see, it, it's got the, the living quarters there, and so I can put a daytime person, and of course, the other is out at Jenkinsville with the new fire station, so they're there already. The, in last, last year, we had, um, sixteen, uh, house fires, uh, three of them, and every one of them are investigated, uh, three house fires were actually arson-related. We had, uh, one charge, one person charged with arson, and, uh, arson, I hope, doesn't turn into a major problem here, but what I can tell you is that we've gotten great support from our sheriff's office, I know I saw our sheriff here, uh, thank you so much for, uh, supporting us, because they're able to, to come in and help us on an investigation side. I, all firefighters are trained to, to, to recognize signs of a suspicious fire, but we're not trained, all of us, to investigate them, so when we see something, we say something, and those guys have always supported us and been a big help, so I wanna tell them thank you. We're trying to be very proactive with social media, we, we want the public to know what we do, because there are some amazing people in this county, and they're doing some amazing things, and we want people to know about it, we put it out there, we want you to know. We also use it to take the opportunity to share safety messages, and to be proactive with fire safety, and put some information in your hands, uh, about helping you out. Some of the future plans, I'll wrap this thing up, one of our goals, that's, it's a dot on the map, is to pursue a countywide ISO rating. Uh, if you know what ISO is, you know it directly affects your homeowner's insurance, because it's a rating that the insurance services offices gives to fire departments, and the higher the rating is, the higher your insurance is, basically. We do not, we do not have a countywide rating at this point, every district has got its own rating, and we want to pursue enhancing that with a countywide rating. The substation that, uh, Mr. Douglas mentioned out at Lake Watery will help in this overall process, it's still a process, I'm working with administration on, on land, uh, and, and situ- uh, actually, uh, location for the station, but that will definitely help. Uh, worst-case scenario, if, let's say we do, and this, this is not a fast thing, this, this will take a while before we can get really a county ISO rating, but let's just say the worst-case scenario, uh, the best ratings we have are fives, that's the best ratings we have in the volunteer service, which is really good for a volunteer fire service. In a worst-case scenario, if we went to a countywide rating, the, some of the ratings could go up. Now, at the end of the day, when, if you went from a five, let's just say to even a seven, which I think is probably the absolute worst-case scenario in our county, the average homeowner, homeowner won't even notice a difference, it may be a couple hundred dollars a year, maybe. Uh, the big savings is when you go from a ten to a nine, it's huge, uh, so when you get in the middle, it kind of wiggles around and, and most of us won't even notice it at the end of the day. But why I mention that is because we're, what we're doing is an overall plan, is I'm working with our county, uh, GIS department to identify the gaps, um, and today, uh, our goal ultimately would be a hundred percent of every residence in the county to be within five miles of a fire station. That's the ultimate perfect world, no money's an object, you know, just have everything, that would be great, because that's what makes a difference, it's the five road miles. Mr. Paul, you're in the insurance business, you understand what I'm talking about, that's very, very important, five road miles from a fire station. In fact, I had a meeting today with Jeff at the assessor's office, and Jeff is a GIS whiz, he is extremely helpful, it is, it is so nice, I will tell you, uh, being a part of county government, to go to another department and ask for some help, and they just are willing to help you, that is so nice, but anyway, uh, today, we had a meeting and we identified, uh, th- one thousand and one hundred residents right now, actually, let me say, address points, uh, that are outside of the five-mile coverage area, so there's over a hun- there's over a thousand address points today in Fairfield County outside of the five-mile coverage. Now, the, 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 the address point is just what it says, not necessarily meaning a residence, but it's probably pretty close, so we've got a lot of people with some higher insurance ratings. Now, I don't want you to fall out of your seat when I say this, okay, but just looking at the map today, it would take nine new fire stations to get everybody within five road miles. I don't fall out your seat yet, good, you listened to me, you didn't fall out of your seat. It's easier and cheaper than you think. For ISO to recognize a fire station, all you gotta have is a building, it's gotta be heated, and it's gotta have a fire truck in it. You can build a building really cheap, a one-bay building, ten, fifteen thousand dollars, doesn't even have to have a cement floor in, it can be a dirt floor, okay, as long as it's secured, and it's got heating, and it's got a operational fire truck in it. So when you think about nine stations, okay, over the course of nine years, it's not a lot of money, actually, um, the county has been blessed to buy a new fire truck every year, so let's just say, you know, my bosses and everybody agrees with moving forward of this plan, once I start buying new fire trucks, instead of taking them out of service, which Davis is good about, making sure I do, you buy something new, you gotta take something old out of service, I'm gonna say, hey boss, let's try to keep that thing, because I wanna put it in one of these new buildings and fill a gap. Uh, you know, we're buying one anyway, we could build it eventually, hey, in worst-case scenario, nine years later, you got all these gaps within five miles of a fire station, which is a pretty good thing, that'd be a wonderful thing, that'd be a feather in our cap. The two most dim- uh, densely populated areas, one is on two fifteen south near Wallaceville Road, uh, and Reservoir Road, um, the other one is in Centerville area, there's a lot of houses over there, I think there's almost two hundred houses over there that are outside of five-mile coverage. So, um, that's kind of the things that we're thinking about, this is a long-term plan, um, it would take a lot to pull it off, but I wanted to throw it out and I wanted to mention it. I wanted to hand out something, I'll close with this. Uh, Ms. Patty is, uh, gonna hand out some patches, uh, to each one of you. This is a, uh, redesigned patch that we just put together for the fire service, and I wanted to give each one of you, uh, one of these patches, because what we did on that patch is we brought in, uh, the county logo with our founding date of seventeen eighty-five, because as we consider new things, as we talk about going forward, as we talk about progress, we must continue to remember our past, we need to remember where we came from, we need to honor our history, so this is an important day in Fairfield County. There are many that have gone before us, that have walked, that stood here before me, and volunteers that are, who helped build this system, and they've helped pave the way for where we are today, uh, but as we look to the future, the cert- the logo, or the motto that you see on there says, "Service Before Self," and that's gonna guide us going forward, because what we're gonna do, we have, we have twenty-four thousand reasons to be the best that we can be. We have twenty-four thousand citizens in this county, and we have to be the best that we can be, and we have to put service to our community above what we want, but, above ourself, so we wanna do the right thing, because we have a vested interest, our volunteers live here, our employees live here, it's, we have a vested interest in seeing this thing succeed and go forward and just do great things in the future. So, I thank you for your time, uh, I will be quiet and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Douglas?
I know y'all see a lot of terrible things, do y'all have any counseling services on hand, um, that is, if someone needs it, um, that you can provide it to them?
Well, of course, the county has an IP for, and that's available to volunteers, uh, should they want it, uh, the State Firefighters Association also has, uh, a behavioral health support team, that all we gotta do is call them and they'll be here.
Thank you.
You know, the councilmember has any questions or comments?
No, I'll just say, I, I'm, I'm thankful that we do have volunteers, that it's something to commit your time to doing, and, uh, hopefully we'll get there to that paid service throughout the county one day. Thank you.
Very much, thank y'all for your time.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Next up, um, as I think everyone's aware, we have to do an audit of our finances every year, um, to make sure that we are fiscally sound and healthy. Uh, we have our auditor, uh, here tonight, Mr. Brian D'Amico, he's with the firm of Elliott Davis, he's here to present his findings. Mr. D'Amico?
Thank you, um, great to be back, um, here in Fairfield County, um, again, uh, as in similar years, I will hit the highlights on the audit report, it's a fairly thick document, I think while you guys went to executive session, um, we passed out a copy for each of you, so, um, again, keeping it at high level, but feel free to, um, ask any questions and I'd, um, be, uh, glad to answer them. I always, uh, like to start out my presentations flipping to our auditor's report, it's, uh, page one and two of the document, um, as we have, um, issued in prior years, we've issued an unmodified opinion, it's the highest level assurance that we can provide as part of our audit procedures, um, but just to point out, there's two different sections in this report, one is the county's responsibility, um, and that their responsibility is to maintain effective internal controls and have accurate financial reporting, um, both of those instances, we, um, we felt that that was such, our responsibility is to, um, obtain reasonable assurance to make sure that these financial statements are materially correct, um, the, the key word is, um, making sure that they're free from material misstatement. Um, the highlights, which, um, it's a combination of the biggest change in this report and probably the... Our responsibility is to obtain reasonable assurance to make sure that these financial statements are materially correct. The key word is making sure that they're free from material misstatement. The highlights, which, it's a combination of the biggest change in this report and probably the biggest challenge of our audit this past year. Flipping to page 11 is your statement of net position, and you will be able to see the liability, it will be slightly changed. Last year, it was called the net, net obligation, and this year, it's the total OPEB liability. OPEB stands for Other Post-Employment Benefits. GASB, which is the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, changed the way that we needed to calculate that liability. So in line with the change in name also was the change in value. Of course, they wouldn't let us decrease the liability, they actually required us to